Okay, Eileen, you want to have the opening statement?
Sure. Planning Board meeting Thursday, September 15th, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 7th, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 7th, 2022, said notice was posted in the Office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to the members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bavai?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Councilman Bonavich? Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Spanville?
Here.
Ms. Talente?
Here.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I would like everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those both serving here and abroad. And Eileen, I hope you're not offended, but we'd like to also say a silent bit of silence for your husband who recently passed.
Thank you, Brian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Since I am remote, could you please read the next agenda item that we have available?
Approval of minutes, which I don't have any vouchers. I have none. Correspondence, I have something from Dennis Collins, who is the attorney for Nine North Realty. And I guess because our meeting last week or two weeks ago just got kind of canceled, we just put everything on this agenda, but he has didn't have any coverage. So he asked that this be carried to October 20th, which it's not a noticed application. So we'll just reschedule it to October 20th and that's not a problem. And that's the application for Nine North Realty for submission waivers, case number SP 1106.
Okay, Steve, you want to make a statement?
Well, it's not a noticed application, but if anybody's here for the submission waiver application of case number SP 1106, Nine North Realty, that submission waiver hearing will be held on the board's regular scheduled meeting of October 20, 2022. Eileen, is that going to be a live or a Zoom meeting?
No, from what I understand, they're still staying on Zoom.
Zoom, okay. So it'll be, yeah, so October 20th, 2022, 7:00 PM, Zoom, not live. Thank you.
Right. The other item I have is again from the last hearing, the application from, or excuse me, Mr. Pape sent me an email that it is his understanding that the planning board application for AAVRHW, which is case number SP 1105, I believe, SP, excuse me, SP 1095, will not be going forward this evening. And he was looking to the planning board for replacement hearing date. So, and he did not notice for this evening. So again, that is just something that has to be rescheduled. I don't know if we need to do it tonight or if the board wants to just leave that with me to reschedule with Mr. Pape or you want to pick.
I think we're okay with you rescheduling on our behalf. Steve, any objection?
The only issue I have, Eileen, is did Mr. Pape grant an extension of the time?
Yes, through whatever date we decide, so.
Okay, very good. So there's no issues. Eileen can reschedule it.
Okay. And that's all the correspondence I have. Then the next item is resolutions. And the first one is for case number SD 3002 Frederick J. Hare. It's a resolution granting minor subdivision approval with ancillary variance relief. Any eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Mr. Cristiano, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Nacastro, Ms. Talente, Mr. Spanville, and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion memorialized.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hold on one second. Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville? You're muted, Rob.
Sorry, I couldn't. It wouldn't let me click. Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized. The next resolution is for case number SP 1080FA for 711, Inc. Is a resolution granting amended final site plan and conditional use approval. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Husser, Mr. Nacastro, Mr. Seaman, Ms. Talente, Mr. Spanville, and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to memorialize.
Thank you.
Second.
Appreciate that, Rob. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield? Brian, I didn't hear you. Mr. Greenfield?
Maybe he's frozen.
I'll come back. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Talente?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Mr. Greenfield? I think he just logged off. He's probably going to log back in, so we'll skip that. But the resolutions, motion carries and the resolutions memorialized.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There you go. There's your yes.
Thank you. The next case is for submission. The next case is for submission waivers. It's case number SP 1104, 96 Industrial Court.
I'd like to swear in Laura Newman. I just can't see her. There she is. Lord, you swear from the testimony provided for the board this evening will be the truth? Thank you very much.
And we have Jared Pape is the attorney for this.
Yes.
Jared, are you going to introduce ahead?
Introduce 96 Industrial?
Or just enter your appearance.
Sure, yes. Hi, Jared Pape, attorney with Heilbronn Pape, appearing on behalf of 96 Industrial Court.
Okay, so I guess with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an application for preliminary site plan approval. It's part of one of our industrial parks. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three of our May 20th, 2022 report. And at this time, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete. I would note, though, that I do believe an outbound survey should be provided, that can be provided prior to a public hearing. So for the purposes of tonight and deeming the application complete, I take no exception.
Hey, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any comments or questions? Mr. Pape, do you have any comments?
No, we defer to Ms. Newman's comments and we have no objection to any of her comments.
Thank you. Nobody has any objections. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I think that was Joe Cristiano.
That was Joe Cristiano, yes.
Can I do a roll call? Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next applicant, our submission waiver?
The next submission waiver was for Nine North Realty, which is being rescheduled. The next submission waiver after that is for case number SD 3006 Benzyon Youngreese. And that is also Mr. Pape's case. It's for preliminary and final major subdivision with ancillary variance relief.
Jared Pape again appearing on behalf of Benzy and Youngreese. We did receive Ms. Newman's report dated August 19, 2022. Again, we will defer to the comments of Ms. Newman.
So Mr. Tim, sorry, why am I swearing in, Steve? Or am I sworn? Am I good?
I think, Lori, one swearing in is good. You're good for the rest of the night.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three of that August 19th, 2022 report. I would note that while this is a major subdivision, it's because of a re-subdivision. So this is actually one lot becoming two lots. So a lot of these items, if we were looking at this as a minor subdivision, would not be applicable. So for those reasons, the one question I have for Mr. Pape is, do you have plans for tree removal?
I do not, but I'll make sure they're included in a re-submission.
Well, what I would note is the board specifically has an application for Woodlands Management approval. So to the extent you have tree removal proposed for the new home, I would like to see a Woodlands Management Plan and application submitted to the board prior to any public hearing. So with that stipulation, Mr. Chairman, I take no exception to the waivers being requested.
We have no objection to that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, unless the board has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield? Did I lose Brian? Mr. Greenfield?
Looks like his video is frozen again.
Yeah.
Maybe Mr. Greenfield could participate just with the audio. Maybe that'll more overwhelm his cable.
Do you want to try that, Brian? I'm going to skip him for now. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries.
Next submission waiver?
The next submission waiver is for case number SD 3004 Erdne Nimgarov. And if you give me a minute, I will get his attorney in here. It is Alexander Pavlov.
Good evening, board.
Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have a simple application here. We seek only two waivers, curb and sidewalk. There are none in the vicinity.
If I can, Mr. Pavlov, those are design waivers, which would be discussed at your substantive hearing. The submission waivers are outlined in item three of my August 19th.
Yes, then we submit, we submit to your letter, Ms. Newman, we reviewed it and we submit to your comments.
So if I can, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a minor subdivision application. Having said that, I do think items B, C, and D should be provided on a follow-up submission. But I don't think, I think we can waive them for the purposes of completeness tonight as long as they are provided on a subsequent revision to the plans. And with that, I would take no exception to the granting of these for completeness purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, counselor.
We concur.
Okay, so you'll agree to add.
They will be supplied. Yes, our engineer will take care of all those items.
Okay, fantastic. Anybody on the board has any questions? If not, please, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro? You're muted, Rob.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Spanville?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. The next application is case number SD 2978 for Edward McNamee. It's an extension of time on a final major subdivision approval that was received by resolution memorialized September 3rd, 2020 to subdivide the existing 17.3 acre tract into eight single-family residential lots and an 8.4 acre open space lot utilizing the open land subdivision option. And it is on block 153, lots 25 to 30, 334 West Farms Road. And I just have to see where his attorney is, if you give me one minute. I do not see him on there.
Hey, you want to come back on?
Yes. And the next two, I guess, is a question for Steve and maybe Laura can even chime in. One is for case SD 2995, and it's an extension of time for Chris Altaver, which is also a minor subdivision, and another extension of time for case SD 2987 for DNR management. And Mr. Cohen had a previous engagement and could not be here tonight. Yeah, so if I can, Steve, I'll defer. I had the opportunity to speak to Ron. I do know the reason why both of these were delayed. However, based upon Ron and my conversation, we thought it would be appropriate to have Mr. Cohen here to present that and that we felt the best thing was that these matters be carried.
So they can just be. You know, the only thing, just to remind the board, you know, with minor subdivisions, you know, upon approval, you only have 190 days to record them. So that is the reason why they need the extension. But those can be granted retroactively even after the 190 days has passed. So as long as it's scheduled in the near future for hearing for the extension, that's fine.
Okay, and they were not noticed items, so they can just be rescheduled, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they will both be rescheduled. And I still do not see the attorney for McNamee. So the next item on the agenda is case number SP 1100, which is Monmouth Commerce Center LLC.
Just in case, in case there is an attorney, if there is an attorney for Edward McNamee's extension, can you please use the raise hand feature? We would like to try to get that one addressed before the real hearings start.
Yeah, that's a good point, Steve. And Eileen, can you please remind them, in case they're on the phone, how they can raise their hand and unmute themselves using a star?
Yes, I don't see anyone on the phone, but if anyone does call in and you are on the phone, you mute or unmute yourself. And I do not have anyone raising their hand, so I do not believe that attorney is on here.
Okay. We tried.
Do you want me to read the introduction to this Monmouth Commerce case, Brian?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, it's case number SP 1100, Monmouth Commerce Center LLC. It's for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief. The description is it's the application of Monmouth Commerce Center LLC as applicant and Lawrence Katz and Felix Blaster as owners seeking preliminary and final major site plan to construct five one-story warehouse buildings with office space with 1,192,500 square feet in total. Each building will contain its own parking and loading stalls to service the building. Access is provided by four new full movement driveways, two along Randolph Road that will serve as access for both passenger vehicles and tractor trailers, a third on Randolph Road, as well as one on Brook Road that will serve for passenger vehicles only. Additional site improvements consist of lighting, landscaping, above-ground infiltration basins to address stormwater management and refuse enclosures. They're also proposing off-site improvements to extend public water and sanitary sewer mains to the development. And the off-site improvements would also consist of improvements at the Randolph Road and Lakewood Farmingdale Road intersection, including the installation of a traffic signal, full width mill and overlay, stormwater inlets along the subject side of Randolph Road and Oak Glen Road, roadway striping within Randolph Road and Oak Glen Road, and an eight and a half foot wide, 21,639 square foot right-of-way dedication to Howell Township along the entire Randolph Road frontage, as well as a 3,055 square foot right-of-way dedication to Howell Township at the intersection of Oak Glen Road and Brook Road. The applicant is also requesting extended vested rights for the site plan approval pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-49D and 52B as the project qualifies for extended vested rights under preliminary final, excuse me, preliminary site plan approval because the property is over 50 acres and under final site plan approval because the project proposes over 200,000 square feet of non-residential floor area on premises known as block five, lots two and three, Randolph Road and Oak Glen Road. And that is Merrill Gonchar is the attorney. If you just give me one minute, I will bring her into the hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, counselor.
And may I also ask that my colleague Adam Faella be admitted? And we have a court reporter, I believe.
I have Adam in. I don't know the court reporter's name. Could she raise her name?
It was from Debbie Rapports' firm.
Is it Diane Holmes?
I see a hand raised, so possibly.
Okay. Anybody else? I know you probably need Steve Catani, correct?
Correct. Eileen, can you also let in Russell Schaper, he's from Morris here on behalf of Jim Winkowski for traffic.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Hi, I am the court reporter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So she has an opportunity to interrupt if I'm speaking too quickly or she misses something. Ready for us to begin, or does anybody have anything else in advance? Mr. Chairman?
Counselor, I do. Well, do you, is my audio okay still?
It's a little fuzzy, but go ahead. I think we can hear you.
I wanted to know, do you think you're going to be able to finish the application today?
I can say with complete confidence that we will not because we have four witnesses in total in support of this application. However, we only have two of those witnesses this evening. As you know, we were originally scheduled for the September 1 hearing. And when it was carried, we did not have confirmation from all of our witnesses as to their availability tonight. So we would, we hope to get through those two witnesses. We have engineering and architecture with us this evening.
Okay. So with that being said, we're gonna, we're gonna have a hard stop at 10, which is our, you know, typical rules for when we're, we're gonna stop the meetings.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I would ask is if we are almost done with our architect and you're questioning if we have an opportunity to wrap up that one witness, that's all we would ask, assuming the public and everybody, everybody has had their, their opportunity and we're down to the last couple of questions from the public, I assume.
Without question, if there's, without question, if there's 15 minutes or so far.
That's all we ask. Other than that, absolutely, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
If that's all, hello again to the board. My name is Merrill Gonchar. I'm a member of the firm of Souls Commiss and Gross. And I have with me my colleague and shortly my partner, Adam Faella. And as I indicated, we will be presenting two witnesses this evening. We are the attorneys for Monmouth Commerce Center. And the subject property, as indicated, is block five, lots two and three on your current tax map. And that is located on Randolph Road and Oak Glen Road. The property is currently in the SED 2 Special Economic Development Zone District, but was located in the SED zone at the time the application was submitted and deemed complete. Therefore, we are proceeding under law, under the terms of the ordinance as it existed at the time the application was deemed complete. We are here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. We will require one or two design waivers. We do not believe that we will need a variance, but we will discuss that with you. There is a variance identified in the review letters with regard to the buffer. And we intend to comply as we will discuss. There are a number of ways. We had sought some guidance as to what it was, since we believe we are compliant. But having had an opportunity to get some guidance on that, either through supplementation or the provision of a BERM for a portion of the frontage where there is, if there's a determination that that's the appropriate means to provide the Four Seasons buffer, whichever of those alternatives are deemed appropriate by your, by the board in consultation with your tree expert, that is what we will do because it is. That is what we will do because it is our intention to comply fully with the buffer ordinance. The application is not only different from a previous application brought with regard to this property, but actually it's very different from the application as described by Ms. Robano in the agenda. I understand that what goes in the agenda is the original application as it was submitted subsequent to receiving a number of reviews from the board's consultants, including engineering and traffic and planning. A number of revisions were made to the application so that the application that's before you this evening is different from what had previously been before the board. It is different in terms of the number, size, design and layout of the buildings, the number and design of the driveways. Phasing has been eliminated, significantly more of the existing trees are being maintained. The number of parking spaces has been reduced, impervious coverage has been reduced. And the, the nature and number of waivers that are required have been changed dramatically. Also, at the time of the previous application, there had been a request at the last meeting for a concept plan with regard to traffic improvements at the intersection of Randolph Road and Route five forty-seven under the jurisdiction of the county. That has not only now been submitted to Monmouth County, but has also been submitted as part of this application. As previously, the applicant in consultation with Monmouth County has presented a design for a signalized, a signalization of that intersection and will be responsible for funding that improvement. As I indicated, we have received a number of letters. And when the board deems it appropriate, we will go through those in detail. It is our hope that as we go through our affirmative testimony, the items that were covered in there will be addressed. And hopefully, when we complete our testimony, there will be few, if any, items that we have not addressed to the satisfaction of the board's consultants and the board. The application previously heard by this board was approximately one million two hundred forty-two thousand one hundred and two square feet. The application before you this evening has been reduced approximately thirty-two percent and is now nine hundred and forty thousand four hundred square feet. The as we also indicated, there were a number of waivers previously as part of this application. And we believe with the revisions and also with some review of those comments that we are down to perhaps two design waivers. And as I indicated, we don't believe that there will be a variance required. The we will be seeking the opportunity to make a payment in lieu of a portion of the required replacement trees that has been called out in the review letters. Again, in terms of changes, there is a reduction of some eight thousand trees in terms of those which are proposed to be eliminated. And of course, the funding to the tree fund would also be reduced proportionally. The will, and again, we will discuss the waivers as part of the direct testimony. There is a, also one item that's identified in one of the review letters. And this has to do with the design of the access drives where we have provided a design which complies with the minimum thirty-foot wide driveways, which is a requirement with regard to commercial and industrial developments. There is an ordinance provision, it's section one eighty-eight dash one oh six A, which indicates that board approval is required for any driveway which exceeds twenty-four feet. To the extent that that is approval other than the site plan approval that we're seeking, we note that that's all we're asking. It is not a waiver as we read the ordinance. With that having been said, unless the board has questions, I would simply note that we have served notice and published notice. We have submitted proof prior to the September one hearing when we were previously scheduled to be heard. And the matter was carried from the September meeting that was canceled to this evening. We would simply ask a confirmation that the notices have been reviewed, found to be proper, and that the board has jurisdiction to proceed with the application this evening.
Thank you, Count. Steve?
Well, I didn't personally review the affidavit, so I'm gonna rely on Eileen. Eileen, was everything in order with respect to the affidavit of service?
It was. I, I did not review it either, but it was reviewed and found to be okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Then unless the board has any other questions at this point, we would simply ask that we call Steve Catani and we will have him qualified, sworn and qualified.
Thank you. Steve, is, is your civil engineer architect group, who is Steve again?
He is our engineer, licensed professional engineer.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, Steve, this is Steve Tom Blogg, the board's Thomas Ryan, thank you. Mr. Catani, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided for the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name and give us your business address or your directory?
Stephen with a V, Catani, C A T T A N I. I am employed by Dynamic Engineering Consultants in our Newtown, Pennsylvania office, eight two six Newtown Yardley Road, Newtown, Pennsylvania. I hold an active current professional engineering license in New Jersey. Have been involved in industrial and commercial development of this nature in the state of New Jersey for a long time, over twenty-five years, I'll admit to that. Have testified in front of dozens of boards in Monmouth County, Ocean County, Middlesex County, the surrounding municipalities to Howell Township on similar applications to this.
And as you indicated, you've appeared before them, they have accepted you as an expert in the field of engineering?
Yes, and I have been in front of this board as recently as two years ago on this previous application and was accepted as the professional on that application.
I would ask that the board accept Mr. Catani as an expert in the field of engineering.
Brian, is that acceptable to the board?
It might have to. I think Brian wound up.
I think he signed off. It's acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, let's start, if you would. Are you going for purposes of your testimony this evening? Will you be relying on any exhibits that have been submitted to the board?
Yes, I intend to be utilizing exhibit A seventeen, which is a rendered site plan, and exhibit A eighteen, which is the aerial of the surrounding area. I don't know.
You can share them, Steve. And before we go any further, Mr. Tannenhouse is back, so I did not miss any testimony.
Right. You just lost his opportunity to accept Mr. Catani as an expert in the field of engineering, so some the, the vice chair stepped in to do so.
Yeah.
Okay, and Steve, can you also identify the most recently revised plans by date so that the board has the same, unless we're gonna put sheets up on the, on the screen, but the, the most recent revised plans that have been submitted?
They would be dated twelve seventeen twenty twenty-one, most current revision two dated August seventeenth.
And there marked A nine.
A nine, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. All right. All right, Steve, then with that, if you would, please describe the, orient the board as to the location of the property and orient the board by surrounding streets and its general location. And as you identify, as you pull something up for the record, if you could just please reiterate which exhibit number it is?
Yes, I have brought up exhibit A eighteen, the aerial map of the surrounding area. As you can see, the proposed property in question is outlined with the yellow outline around the proposed property or existing property. We have County Route five forty-seven, which runs from bottom to top on the left side of the page or the western side of the property. We have Randolph Road, which runs left to right across the northern portion of the property and then intersects with Oak Glen Road, which then runs south easterly along the northeastern corner of the property where it intersects with Lakewood Allenwood Road. Lakewood Allenwood Road then runs north-south down the eastern side of the property to Lakewood, located on the other side of the Matitakonk River to the south or the bottom of the proposed aerial. The property has essentially been unoccupied for approximately forty years, forty to forty-five years. It was previously utilized, or the eastern half of the property was previously utilized for horse-type operations. You can see as evidenced by the aerial photograph here, there is a former horse race located in the eastern portion of the property. There were previously, I believe, a residence and some outbuildings associated with those horse operations. There are also currently some remnants of some chicken coops located in the southeastern corner of the property within the wetlands and stream buffer. But there, there has been no activity on this property. It is essentially untouched for the, for the past thirty or forty years. We have existing utilities that will service the site are located in Randolph Road to the northwest. Existing electric to the northeast of the property. In Oak Glen Road, there is existing sewer that is part of the Manasquan Sewer Authority in Ocean County, which we'll be connecting to as well. And then existing gas and electric services are located along Randolph Road frontages, as well as Oak Glen and Lakewood Allenwood Road.
Okay. And just to clarify, in your history, the uses that you described, the property was not used for farming at any time, is that best of your knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge, I know there was some previous reporting that, that indicated, I believe in the phase one, that there, there may have been a historical agricultural use. And there was testing that was completed and performed, showing acceptable conditions on the property. To my knowledge, for the past at least fifty or sixty years, there's been no agricultural use on the property.
Okay. All right. If you could then begin with, excuse me, with the description of what is currently being proposed at the site?
Yes. I will.
And will you be using a different exhibit?
Yes, I'll be utilizing exhibit seventeen, the site plan rendering. Hopefully that's visible to everyone.
I can see it.
Okay. We have zoomed in, we have zoomed in on the yellow property that was identified on the aerial. Again, Randolph Road at the top of the page, running left to right. Oak Glen Road in the top right corner, and then Lakewood Allen Road, road down the eastern or right side of the page. We have the Matitakonk River running along the southern property line. And then we are proposing four warehouse buildings, two buildings along Randolph Road, and then two buildings to the south of those buildings behind and adjacent to the Matitakonk River. We're proposing to maintain along the eastern portion of the property against Oak Glen Road and Lakewood Allenwood Road, a large undeveloped portion, approximately twenty-five percent of the property in that area will remain undisturbed as part of this application. The proposal is for warehousing use in these buildings, which we anticipate to be generally the short and long-term storage of bulk materials or products. We anticipate that they will be distributed from this facility in a manner consistent with what we believe the warehousing definition in the, in the ordinance calls for. This will not be fulfillment centers. It is not intended to be a large employee-driven type operation. It is strictly going to be the, the short and long-term storage and, and holding of general materials and products. So that, that is what we are representing for this application.
Steve, just by way of comparison, you indicated that there are four buildings that represents a revision. Is that correct to what was originally filed and also what had previously been before the board?
Correct. So the original application included a fifth building located in the eastern portion of the property in what is now the wooded area. That application encompassed approximately one million two hundred and forty-two thousand square feet. The current application that is front of the board represents nine hundred and forty thousand four hundred square feet. So a, a reduction of, of over three hundred thousand square feet in, in gross floor area. We are proposing three driveways along Randolph Road for the access to this facility. A truck ingress and egress point at the northwestern corner of the property. A passenger vehicle only ingress and egress point located centrally into the center of the site, and then a third driveway for truck access only to the east along Randolph Road. We have designed the two truck entrances. I will zoom in on this. You can see that these entrances are designed to provide right-in and left-out only maneuvers to ensure that the tractor trailers will be traveling west on Randolph Road to County Route five forty-seven. We have designed these in a manner so that the tractor trailers will be unable to make right turns out of the facility and be able to move east on Randolph Road. The, the intent is to force all of the truck traffic from the site to the west to County Route five forty-seven. The center driveway will be a full movement driveway for the passenger vehicles left in, left out, right in, right out, as that will be utilized only for passenger vehicles going to the office and employees of the facility. Circulation, there is a main thirty-foot drive aisle around the perimeter of the facility, as well as thirty-foot drive aisles internal to the property as required by the ordinance. Trucks will come in and enter into the loading bays, which are isolated behind the buildings and protected by view from the roadway. They will come in and traverse east and west through the loading areas. And then when they exit, they will move north back to Randolph Road. And again, based on the configurations of the driveways, will be directed westerly onto County Route or on Randolph Road to County Route five forty-seven. The previous impervious coverage that was submitted initially for the project was approximately fifty-five percent, where seventy percent was permitted under the zone. This current application has further reduced that impervious coverage to forty-two percent. Again, a significant reduction from what is permitted at seventy percent in the zone. Again, as indicated by Merrill, the, the project is being constructed in a single phase based on the, the new stormwater management regulations and the manner in which stormwater and the general improvements are controlled on the property. The, the, a single phase will be the method of construction in order to get all the improvements appropriately set up to handle the proposed buildings on the property. We have provided a significant We have uh, provided uh, a significant landscaping plan in the open areas within the, within the project. We are providing shrubs, evergreens, shade trees uh, and ornamental trees i- in all the open space areas outside of the proposed basins. Uh, we are proposing a, a full fifty-foot wide berm and landscaping along Randolph Road and along the residential use across Randolph Road. Uh, the fifty-foot buffer will travel essentially from the proposed residential use on lot across Randolph Road. It will go easterly along Randolph Road and wrap around the corner at Oakland Road. Uh, where it will terminate into the existing green space that we're providing along Oakland Road. I think to, to, to parlay this into one of the, the waivers or variance questions relates to the proposed buffer along Oak Glen, Oakland Road. We had submitted the application with a, a one-hundred-foot setback to the proposed parking and a minimum two-hundred-foot setback to the building, which we believed met the uh, the two items or one or two of the, the items listed in, in required for the, the proposed buffer. Uh, I believe your professionals have, have raised a question as to the the sufficiency of the existing vegetation in that area to provide a full season buffer uh, and have indicated that they would, would like to work with us in providing additional landscaping to provide that appropriate four-season buffer which, which we are fully uh, agreeable to, to work with the board's professionals in order to provide any additional infill or additional landscaping or, or buffer plantings that would satisfy uh, your board's professionals to, to meet the intent uh, of that buffer requirement and not needing the actual variance for that.
And Steve, if I may be, uh, one of the other alternatives is to extend the berm uh, with the plantings as another alternative, if it should be determined that infill or supplementing the buffer would not be adequate to satisfy the four seasons um, requirement of the ordinance?
Correct. We would then continue that fifty-foot buffer down along Oakland Road and around the corner uh, and down Lakewood Allenwood Road and, and we would coordinate that with your professionals to the extent it's needed.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Additionally, um, we're meeting all the proposed setbacks and, and bulk standards of the ordinance. We're not, we're not looking for any variances or anything associated with, with setbacks, heights, uh, coverages, uh, parking, et cetera. We have, uh, as Merrill indicated, uh, due to the large clearing area of the project, we're looking to make the monetary payment towards the tree fund, uh, as providing all the uh, replacement vegetation would not be feasible based on the proposed development. Uh, we're providing approximately four hundred and twenty-seven trees on site and the remainder in a, uh, in a payment to the fund.
And how many acres approximately are proposed to be undisturbed and leave the existing vegetation as the project is now before the board?
So we're, we're proposing approximately uh, sixty percent of the site is, is disturbance and approximately forty percent would remain undisturbed. Uh, and, and additionally, the we have a wetlands letter of interpretation for the property and we have a flood hazard area verification as well. And we are staying entirely outside of any wetlands buffers and flood hazard area zones. Additionally, our proposed stormwater management discharges are outside of those areas. Uh, and as such, we're not looking to uh, require any NJDEP permitting uh, other than sewer and water for the project.
Okay.
Uh, we are complying with the recently adopted New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations. We're providing fifteen stormwater management BMPs on the property that are scattered throughout the property in order to collect uh, the required individual sub-areas from the development uh, treat uh, that for water quality and groundwater recharge and then gradually discharge those flows back out into uh, the property in a similar fashion as they did under the existing conditions. Uh, so we have designed this to meet those regulations and we're not looking for any variances or waivers from the stormwater management regulations for the property.
And are those new regulations, Steve, uh, the reason that the um, uh, one of the other significant differences between this application and the previous application or uh, and that was before the board a few years ago, um, that had one large detention basin on the easterly portion. Um, and is it the stormwater regulations that were adopted in twenty twenty-one that now mandate the distribution of stormwater facilities throughout the site?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, additionally, uh, within, with the previous application, we, we had not at that time provided a full pedestrian sidewalk access along the road frontages. Uh, under this application, we are proposing uh, pavement widening uh, as well as the right-of-way dedication that was indicated by Merrill. We're also providing full sidewalks along the Randolph Road frontage, the Oakland Road frontage and the Lakewood Allenwood frontage as well. So there is no longer uh, a, a waiver associated with providing the sidewalk for the property either. Regarding lighting, I know this, this comment had come up regarding the, the average, the foot candles over, over the lot, uh, average zero-point-three foot candles that was not indicated. The numbers, the average numbers we had provided on the plan were over the specific pavement areas. Uh, over the lot area, the, the foot candles average out to zero-point-three foot candles uh, is defined in the definition over the area of the project. As indicated, our, our utilities will be collecting uh, sanitary sewer within the property. The sanitary sewer will run from the left to the right or west to east, uh, in between the buildings. Will discharge northerly into Randolph Road and then will traverse Randolph Road to the intersection of Oakland and then north uh, for several hundred feet to an existing sewer trunk line that crosses Oakland Road. Additionally, as part of this project, we will be installing a sanitary sewer gravity main within Randolph Road to our western property line, uh, providing future accessibility to sanitary sewers uh, for any connections to the west or along the northern portion of Randolph Road. There is existing New Jersey American Water Services in Randolph Road to our west. We will be extending those along Randolph Road to our eastern driveway and then looping that water surface, water service through our property. Uh, we have preliminarily met with New Jersey American Water uh, and they are in agreement with our, our current design uh, for those facilities. We are proposing individual recycling collection points at the rear of the buildings. These will be located in, in small trash enclosures located periodically uh, within the loading areas. Uh, currently those enclosures are landscaped and provided with a chain link fence with privacy slats. Uh, I believe it was raised by, by the board's planner that a solid fencing, the, the chain link and privacy slats would not uh, qualify as a solid barrier around the enclosure. We would uh, look to replace the chain link with privacy slats to a white vinyl, solid vinyl panel type fencing around the enclosures along with the landscaping that is proposed. Uh, due to the nature uh, of the trucking operations and the larger scale of vehicles that will be back here. Uh, the, the solid vinyl panels, uh, if damaged are, are much easier to replace and can be replaced in smaller sections uh, and would allow for uh, easier maintenance and upkeep uh, to those facilities. We are currently showing uh, trash compactors on the ends of each of the buildings. These compactors are fully contained. There is no exposed trash. All the trash is collected internal to the building and is brought to the compactor inside the building and then is fed to the compactor within the building. So there's no, there's no exposed trash, no trash. Yep. Am I speaking too quickly?
No, just give me a minute. Mr. Tannenhouse had to switch from his phone to his laptop.
Okay.
To bring him back in.
No problem.
Thank you. I believe he is back now, so you can continue. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's perfectly fine. It's better that he's not driving.
Yes.
The trash enclosures would be fully housed. There would be no exposure there. Uh, we are providing landscaping on the sides of the buildings. Uh, the enclosures themselves are called out to have a, a fence uh, around the enclosure with it, with a gate for the trucks to open up and then pull uh, these containers off of the uh, off of the dollies that they sit on and then they would replace the container. But again, all that refuse collection would be within the inside of the building. So we believe uh, the intent to, to screen and buffer uh, these compactor trash locations meets the intent of the ordinance. We're proposing a monument sign located at the passenger vehicle driveway along Randolph Road. There's one monument sign proposed for the identification of the property. And then internally, uh, we're proposing approximately seven directional signs uh, which will be located uh, along the drive aisles to direct uh, vehicles appropriately through the site uh, to the individual buildings. Uh, and again, those are proposed to comply with the, the ordinances with respect to size and height.
And that's another change from the plan that had previously been before the board. Is that correct in terms of the number of the sizes, the signs provided uh, and the uh, elimination of uh, buildings uh, or facade signs?
Correct. So that essentially is a, a general explanation and, and layout of the, of the proposed development. I would be open for any questions at that point, Merrill.
Uh, all right, uh, we had asked for a waiver previously with regard to the requirement for either bollards or some other uh, separation uh, between uh, parking areas and the building. Um, we are now complying with that provision and no longer asking for any waiver as we had in the previous application. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, um, and um, let's go back to the discussion with regard to lighting. As um, you had mentioned that there are actually two components, as I understand, with regard to the um, the lighting requirement. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, and one of those has to do with um, a requirement for point three um, foot candles, I guess. Um, I think it says anywhere in, in the language of the
Uh, yes, it states zero-point-three foot candles anywhere.
Okay, um, interesting choice of words. Doesn't say everywhere, but it says anywhere. Um, assuming that that's what it means, um, are we fully compliant with that?
Well, we would, we would not be within the vegetated woodlands that we're maintaining or any of the wetlands buffers or any of the basin areas. So
Okay. So the only place that we would not be providing the point three is in the area of the buffers along the, the stream, uh, the wetlands, uh, or riparian buffers um, where we are not permitted to disturb them?
Correct, as, as well as any of the unoccupied basin or, or lawn areas that would not be subject to pedestrian travel.
Okay, so in every other location other than the, the grass basins and the buffers, we would meet the point three requirement?
Yes.
Okay, with regard to the um, um, point five, that is in, an average lighting. And you test, is your testimony that over the uh, entire area of the project, we do, uh, we are below the point five uh, maximum average?
Yes, over the entire area, yes.
Okay, um, and um, let me go back to the next one, um. The um, one of the things that was in the introduction and I want to make sure that we are clear from the testimony in the description or as we originally had proposed this new application, there was a um, there were accesses not only on Randolph, but also access from the easterly side of the property. Um, and i- is it correct then that the only access points that are currently proposed are the three along Randolph and there will be no uh, there's not proposed by this application to be any uh, access from any other road?
Correct.
Okay, um, and under the uh, the review letters, there was also a question. There is a provision that requires landscaping um, between the loading docks and the parking. Um, can you describe where that would require uh, landscaping and you, can you describe how we propose to address uh, that issue?
So the ordinance requires landscaping around all sides of the building. Uh, clearly from, from a operational standpoint for a building with loading doors, uh, it would be impractical to provide landscaping along the loading door side of, of the building. Uh, we are providing landscaping on, on the full three sides of the building. Uh, we did not propose landscaping for obvious reasons along the loading doors. However, we could provide a, a two-foot landscape strip directly against the base of the building and provide landscaping within that strip that would essentially fall underneath the, the proposed trucks and loading doors against that side of the building. Uh, we however, would not be able to accommodate that specifically at any doorways that go into the building. Again, it would be impractical to provide landscaping at doorways. So, um, we currently have not proposed landscaping on, on the loading side of the building, but could accommodate that through a, a two-foot landscape strip uh, along the rear of the building.
Okay, so we are prepared to eliminate the waiver by providing the landscaping on this one side of the building that currently doesn't have it within that two-foot limitation?
Yes.
Okay, um, and um, just want to see if there's anything, um, okay. The um, I know it still appears, um, there had been a, uh, I don't know if this is treated as a, um, I think it's always been as a waiver, the, uh, the scale of the drawings. Um, was that one of the items that we were still um, just asking for relief from?
Yes, we were asking for relief from the scale of the tree management plan. We provided an overall tree management plan due to the size and the scale of the project. Uh, we felt that the information was still easily readable and, and was provided clearly. So we were still requesting that waiver.
That was um, section one eighty-eight dash one ninety-three D one, um.
Yes, where the, the scale is one to one hundred and we're
Okay, um, I think at the present time, that would complete our direct testimony from this witness, uh, um, unless we, I, I guess we'll go through the review letters, but um, I think that that is all we have on direct subject to our right recall and to address any questions uh, that the board or its consultants might have.
If our professionals have comments?
Uh, Brian, I have a couple of questions. Uh, we have a comment in our report relative to the date of the survey from twenty eighteen. Is the representation that, that the survey is still current and accurate?
Yes, and we will provide an updated final survey.
And are you the witness who's going to testify to operations of the site, number of tenants, hours of operation, employees? And are you the witness who's going to testify to operations of the site, number of tenants, hours of operation, employees, the nature of the traffic, unloading, pickup, delivery?
I I will testify to the hours of operation, general number of employees. Probably the traffic circulation and trips would would come under the traffic engineer.
Okay, great. So can you testify to hours?
Yeah, so the the anticipation is that it would be a twenty-four hour, seven day operation for for the trucks and and deliveries. It's it's anticipated that there would be approximately one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred employees for the project. We would look to comply with the minimum tenant size of five thousand square feet per the ordinance. There there may be multiple tenants in the buildings, but they would not fall below that minimum square footage requirement. Again, the the general circulation of the site has been designed to separate the vehicular passenger vehicular traffic from the truck traffic. Again, the passenger vehicles would come in the central driveway with direct access to the passenger vehicle parking for each of the buildings with only the minor intersection interaction with the tractor trailers centrally in the property. All the other truck traffic would be relegated to the eastern and western drive aisles and driveways out onto Randolph Road. Again, with the intent of the design of those driveways to send all the truck traffic west along Randolph Road to County Route five forty-seven. We would comply with with all the noise ordinances. Again, we've provided a recycling and trash statement showing that we believe our proposed recycling and trash operations on the site would be consistent with the expected use of the property.
We would also just state for the record that this is, we do not have tenants for all of the buildings in there, for there may be some variation in terms of the the numbers of employees, how shifts might work, which would be dependent upon the actual occupants.
You're muted, Laura.
Sorry. Any security fencing?
Right now, there is no security fencing proposed. We understand that if a specific tenants had the needs that they would have to come back in front of the board if if a variance or anything was required.
Any outdoor storage or overnight vehicles?
No.
If I may, though, that that the the in what I don't know what you're asking in terms of vehicles. The vehicles will be parked there when they're parked there.
Well, as I recall, we discussed that at length with your prior application. So where would vehicles be parked and would they be parked overnight or for a long period of time?
They they wouldn't be parked for a long period of time. I think if a tractor is attached to a trailer.
No, wait, wait, let's let's the the let's put it this, let me just separate. You answered her. I think there were two questions and I want to make sure we're answering them separately. Are we proposing to store any materials or goods outside? Will there be any outdoor storage of goods or material?
No.
Okay. But while we did discuss it, there has been a judicial determination that neither truck parking nor trailer parking nor vehicles or the spaces they're in constitute outdoor storage. So that's why I want to separate. We're certainly confirming that we are not proposing to store any goods, material, equipment, or other types of product outside. But there will be trucks or there may be trailers or trucks parked there and they may be parked there overnight.
Okay, Ron's not here. Steve, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. I'm not familiar with that legal determination. I asked for the storage, so I would just defer and maybe we could revisit that at a future hearing if needed.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think with with Ms. Gonchar's statements and the they've put their testimony on the record. They've explained what their position is and what they're doing. I think for purposes of this section of the hearing, that's appropriate. How the board deals with that later on, that could be dealt with later on.
And I I apologize, Ms. Newman, that that was not made to, I assumed you had read it, so I apologize. There is a appellate division decision decided May twelve, twenty twenty-two at starting at page twelve, it deals with quote, as to the outdoor storage ordinance, the term quote, outdoor storage end quote, as used in the ordinance does not explicitly encompass trucks and tractor trailer parking proposed in the site plan. And then it continues on page fifteen.
I mean, nothing, I'm just gonna stop.
Hold on, Jen. Hold on, Ms. Bean. Ms. Bean, if you'd like to provide testimony, Steve, could you please swear, Ms. Bean?
Hold on. Jen, we'll swear you in in a minute, but Merrill, you're just reciting what was in the appellate division decision?
I'm reading from it where it says explicitly that trailer and truck parking spaces and the vehicles parked in those spaces spaces are not quote, outdoor storage.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Just one last question. All right, Jen?
I just I that was I wasn't because we had extensive discussion previously, I didn't want anyone to think that I was re, I didn't think I was reinventing the wheel. And I had assumed that others had read that, and I apologize if they hadn't. That's why I responded that I wanted to be clear that when Steve said no to outdoor storage, he meant that which we now understand to be outdoor storage, which would be materials or stuff as opposed to the trucks or the trailers. I didn't want the record to reflect that we were saying that trucks or trailers would not be parked there. That's all.
Thanks for your clarification. All right, Jennifer, would you, Ms. Bean, do you swear from the testimony provided for the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, we probably should put a pin in this for the few, like, I mean, Merrill, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing on what you're saying, but I just want to put a pin in it until, you know, everyone has a chance to review it. That's all.
That's, and again, I didn't want the record, I didn't want Steve's language to be a representation or read as a heard as a representation that that we were conceding that the that the trucks or trailers were outdoor storage and we were representing, we wouldn't park them there. That's all I wanted to be clear on his.
So I, but I think that there is I I and I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying at all. I'm just saying that maybe that's something that we're going to discuss further and that we're just going to put a pin in it. And I'm not saying that Steve is being disingenuous in his representations. I'm certainly not saying that, but I'm just saying that this is an issue that we probably should put a pin in until a future meeting.
Okay, Steve, do you agree that lots will be consolidated?
Yes.
And the four existing buildings that are going to remain that are shown on your rendering, is there a specific reason why? Is there any permitting that is precluding you from removing those? They're basically, you know, remains in a dilapidated dilapidated condition.
Yeah, we we spoke with the Environmental Commission last night briefly about this. They've been there for forty some odd years. They've I don't want to lessen their impact, but they've kind of become grown into the into the environment. They are in the repairian buffer and they are in the wetlands buffer. So our position is why disturb the wetlands and repairian buffers for something that's been there for so long? There are, I believe, permits by rule or general permits that can be obtained for the removal of those debris and and it reestablished back to the grade which which could be obtained. I think that, you know, the the applicant's position is they've they've been there. They're not, they're they're not you know, they're not visible. They've become so overgrown at this point, you know, a significant amount of them is deteriorated into the ground. So so that was our position was just to leave them alone.
I I don't agree with that position, so I'm just gonna put that on the record. I think they should come out. And I think we could secure this permit necessary to do that and let it revegetate in a natural state without structures located within that area.
And for the record, I would agree with Jen. I'm assuming, I know we're going to hear from a traffic consultant, that are we going to hear from an architect who will address green practices associated with the building screening of HVAC units? And some of that nature?
Yes.
And I believe you had agreed to comply with the standards of performance at the town, specifically noise. I was a little concerned when I heard you say this was a twenty-four hour, seven day a week operation, but you are stipulating you will be fully compliant with the noise ordinance?
Yes.
Did you submit a noise study?
We did not submit a noise study.
I would submit that probably that's something that we should we should ask for. I know it's not part of our checklist, but you know of this, a twenty-four hour operation with tractor trailers and backup beeping and all that other stuff. I submit that we should require a noise a noise study.
We're going to object to that on the record and consider it.
Steve, I heard you relative to right away improvements, but just to confirm, there will be widening along Randolph Road as well as full width pavement restoration?
Yes, and and I did, I also did not state there'll be improvements on Oak Glen Road as well to the intersection of Lakewood Allenwood.
Does the, does that include curbing as well?
Yes, and and widening, and I think that we're providing three full lanes through there.
And sidewalk, I heard you testify to, just to clarify.
Yes.
Steve, we have a technical engineering report. Do you agree to comply with all those items?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time for this witness.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I only have one comment, and it relates to the trash enclosure. I know the applicant has requested a vinyl fencing trash enclosure. We have routinely required basin reenclosure, especially considering the fact that this is an industrial site with trucks in and out. And I would submit that I don't, I don't support a vinyl fencing trash enclosure. I think that we should be requiring a masonry enclosure as we have of every single applicant that comes before us.
If I may, our position is simply, we understand that the that there has been a determination that the chain link with the strips doesn't satisfy, I guess, the solid element of the requirement. We believe that the vinyl the solid vinyl fence meets the ordinance and therefore eliminates the need for a waiver. However, we will represent to the board that we will confer with the client and make a determination as to whether we will provide the masonry, but it's merely a question. If we think we've eliminated the waiver, we understand that your planner is is recommending the masonry and we will take that certainly under advisement.
I mean, I just want to put on the record that this is not something that's specific to your application. This board can attest, as can the zoning board, for as long as I've been working in this town, which has been many, many years. This is something that I have advocated and has been implemented in every application that's come before the board, whether it's a planning board application or a zoning board application. And especially in an industrial site that has tractor trailers in and out. So I would stand firmly on my recommendation that the board require masonry enclosure should they act in the affirmative.
Ms. Bean, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the the reason being, this came up a number of years ago. Because I I thought vinyl would be a better option. It would last longer, but then I was corrected and in fact that the vinyl actually starts to look pretty nasty over a couple of years and the door the other alternatives, all the alternatives hold up a lot better.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I did have one other item relative to the lighting. It was testified that they meet the average maximum of point five. In our review, it looked like that that was exceeding the point five, so I would just ask that the engineer provide the associated calculations to demonstrate that he does not exceed that average.
We'll we'll provide that.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else for this witness, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next witness, counsel?
Oh, I I didn't know if there were the board or if it or the public, if you would you or do you do that after? I didn't remember how.
We're gonna do it after. I I think I I think we're gonna, we're gonna hear the testimony in its entirety. And 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 you already have things that need to be updated. You need lighting counts, so forth. There are things that plans are going to be updated. I think everybody needs an opportunity to see the completed plans in order to be able to provide any type of future comments.
I'm just looking. I don't know if there are items that are actually, Steve, can you just double check with me? I don't know that the calculations are actually plan revisions, and obviously for things like that, we really would not want to have to pay another submission for those kinds of minor items. Now, if we have a redesign of landscaping, that might be a
I think we could provide Laura's office just a written summary of the lighting calculations.
Respectfully, Mr. Mr. Chairman, my concern, this application is very large. We heard it previously. We spent a lot of time with things that we were going to comply with and we didn't get plan revisions. So I heard what they offered relative to the variance application. I think if they want that eliminated, they need plans which respectfully address that. In addition, we heard that we could eliminate a design waiver by providing a two-foot strip on the back of the building. Again, it's a design waiver. I think we should have the opportunity to see that. The agreeance with the technical report, I mean, I understand those are minor items that could go, but to the extent that we're talking about things that are waivers, I think that these are things that should be provided.
We would proffer that those could be revised, provided by way of an exhibit as opposed to being required to pay an additional one-third of the application fee or some ten, twenty percent of an extensive application fee just to demonstrate some of the more minor revisions. But we can revisit that. I guess we're being told then that that the the this will not be open to the public or the board will not ask questions of the testimony provided tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we want to see a final application. I also have some questions that I see there that there are some of our commissions that that weren't seen, such as the shade tree and the environmental.
We were before the Environmental Commission last evening. I will also advise that while I understand that there were earlier letters, we for whatever reason, did not see those. We certainly would have visited with those commissions earlier. As soon as we were aware that they were asking to see us, we immediately called to see when they would meet. And we did appear before the Environmental Commission last evening. The the only thing in their review letter was to ask us to appear, which we did. As far as shade tree, between the time that we had had seen the request, the April first, excuse me, the April, the September first meeting and then the fifteenth, unfortunately, the Shade Tree Commission was not scheduled to meet again until September twenty-one. And we have already made arrangements to appear. I think it's the twenty-first. We've made arrangements to appear at that time.
Can you provide testimony if there was any environmental commission comments?
There were questions. I think your vice chairman was there last evening with us.
Yeah, a lot of it was questions, and I guess I guess my question to you, Merrill, is are you bringing an eco person? Is that going to be a subsequent expert that you're going to bring or an environmental person? I I, you know, I know we had some questions for Steve. I don't know if Steve's the guy to to answer them.
I'm sorry, my recollect, no, we're not proposing to bring an environmental consultant. We we were asked last evening some questions about the the trees being removed, which we answered, we were, we had provided, we told them that we did have our permitting that we needed from DEP by way of the LOI for wetlands as well as the flood hazard verification. Those are already in hand. We we did offer to provide that there had been a site visit previously. There was a report, and I think Steve's testimony last evening was that nothing has changed on the site. We did offer to you know, to submit to them the phase one that had been done, and Steve referred to that this evening that would be in the environmental commission's file, but if they wanted, we would certainly resubmit whatever had previously been submitted to them because the property has not been developed. No one has been on the site or used the site since then. And I don't recall that there were other, certainly there were no items that, and Steve can correct me, that I recall the commit, the environmental commission did not invite us to come back, did not indicate there were any open items that they wished for us to return to them to discuss. And and so I am not aware. I don't know if they would generate a letter, but certainly And, and so I am not aware, I don't know if they would generate a letter, but certainly they did not raise uh any open items uh that I understood to be um a requirement or an invitation for us to come back or provide anything additional.
If I could, maybe a couple of follow up questions to that point. Uh Mr. Katani, you agreed to comply with all items of my technical report, however, the phase one outside of the former agricultural use did identify um at least three other areas of concerns. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is there gonna be a phase two report done?
The, there'll be whatever appropriate, and we can get our environmental individual to testify to whatever required follow up uh to address those AOCs will be provided.
So I think to, to answer your question, Mr. Husser, I think it is appropriate that they should have an environmental expert testify to those areas of concerns when a phase two would be required, and if any remediation uh is required. Uh one other question, Mr. Katani.
Ms. Newman, that's something that, that would just be brought here to the board, or is that something that should be brought to the environmental commission so they can opine on it before it comes to the board?
Well, I think it would be.
I, I'm not seeing a lot of applications where we've gone to phase two, so that's why I'm asking the question.
And, and let's, if, if I could, if we step back to, and Merrill, it might be another question for you. Typically, a, a phase one, you know, it has a shelf life of six months, and we're, we're relying on a phase one report from, you know, when we saw this application years ago. I would assume for financing purposes that the phase one would be updated at least and include the AOCs that were originally there. You're saying that the site hasn't changed. All right, fine, the site hasn't changed. Um but the, I would assume that there would need to be some type of updated report, and those ASCs be addressed. Are, are they addressed during, you know, redevelopment? Are they addressed? Yeah, however they are, that's outside of my purview, but um was there a plan to do an updated phase one?
Um you, you mentioned financing, we're nowhere near that point, so even if there was, that would be subsequent to any approval being obtained. Um and my recollection is this is not, this was not something that was previously requested. We certainly um um did not deal with this um previously. It's not a checklist item, uh and this is the first time that we've been requested to address any kind of environmental. Uh obviously, this is a new application, but I will say, given the extent of the previous, uh this was not something that was raised. It's the same property, and it had the same information before both the environmental commission and this board. If you want to um uh you know, if, if there's additional information required, that's fine.
Nick, before you answer.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, section one eighty eight dash twenty six point one of our ordinance does specifically require the historic pesticide site sampling procedures. I think that's why you guys did the additional investigation. That's why Mr. Katani is concluding that there really is no, no warrants relative to an agricultural use. Um I think a phase one is typically always requested by this board. Um it may not be a checklist requirement, but it is always requested by this board, and to the extent, extent area of, of concerns are identified. They are, you know, we do expect that a phase two report and or any remedial action um that is required be discussed with the board.
And we could certainly put together a, a letter from the environmental commission, Brian.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I had one other item, and it linked to a comment, and then back in our report, um there was discussion, and I think we should get, be able to give them some direction as it relates to the buffering that's required. Because what I do think we need is information relative to the tree removal that is required. We have notation um about, you know, what the contribution amount is. Four hundred and twenty seven replacement trees are being provided, but what actually is your acreage of removal? I think we note in item H that there's a discrepancy between whether it's sixty three point five acres or sixty point eight seven acres. Um also, you noted there's no phasing proposed, but it appears like you intend to clear in phases. Is that correct?
Uh based on the stormwater management, uh I think that the, the limit of disturbance for the project would be cleared to some extent. There may be areas internal to that that would remain as part of a construction scheduling. But the, the entire limit of disturbance would be cleared in some fashion as part of the construction.
So you're not, you don't anticipate phasing per se, your clearing, you will?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so if we could just also, I mean, if the applicant is coming back, I think we need to give them direction as it relates to that buffer area so that they can compile an appropriate plan, and then we can ascertain um the necessary removal for this application.
Yeah, and, and we're free to meet with, with uh the board's tree professional out at the site to, to review that prior to the follow up hearings.
Thank you. Ms. Newman, is that acceptable to you?
Uh it is. I think we need direction from the board, though. I think what was indicated was, you know, they thought that they were compliant. Um they appear that, you know, they appear to concede that we don't necessarily agree. And they said, you know, they could provide additional landscaping to ensure a four season buffer or extend the berm. And, you know, both of which I think comply. I think Shari's been onsite. I think she can testify to what type of material we're, we're, we're looking at out there. But again, I think it's incumbent upon the board to give some direction as to whether or not you want us to achieve four set, four season buffer by way of landscaping. Um or if we want to see the burn continue.
I, I, I wanna take option C, and, and, and I, we trust our professionals to, to, as the applicant's engineer indicated, they'll meet at the site and work with you guys to come up with a solution. Uh and I don't think that anybody here on the board is, it's got the experience that you and the Shari had, I mean, Spiro have in order to uh make that determination and guidance.
That, that, Mr. Chairman, we have no problem meeting with them to review the buffer conditions.
Thank you.
And we would invite them, we had met three years ago. We don't expect anybody to remember all the trees and what they look like, and whether there's been deterioration or uh changes out at the site in the intervening uh period. We had noted on the plan that we would supplement as required. Uh it appears that there's some concern that it be, in some areas, there may be the need for so much supplementation that it would actually be um almost the equivalent of clearing and replacing it. And that may vary along the frontage. Um in some areas, it may be that supplementing is adequate, and in others, we may need to provide the berm. Uh we are uh completely willing to be guided by which of those. Since we may have a different view of what constitutes a four season berm, and so we are deferring, obviously, to the board's consultants.
Thank you.
We would simply ask us, you know, as soon as we're able to go out there, will allow us to do a redesign based on the guidance that we receive.
Thank you. Next wit, uh next witness, please.
Thank you.
Kyle, you're up.
Who do you need? I'm sorry.
Kyle. Ferrier, whose name I'm probably destroying.
He has his hand raised, if that helps. This is Adam Fial.
Does help, thank you.
While you're at it, Adam, can you figure out which um exhibits we're gonna be referring to now also?
Sure. The architectural plans that are um dated June first are, is exhibit A ten.
You.
And I'm sorry, before we get going, councilor, it's almost nine o'clock. Does anybody need a five minute?
Oh, my reporter's nodding. Thank you so much. Yes, I was, that was awful of me, sorry.
Five minutes in between the professionals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board will take a five minute recess. They'll be back at eight fifty. The planning board will now reconvene.
Do we have Kyle?
You do?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Kyle, I'm sorry, how do I pronounce your last name? So I swear you improperly?
Sure, Ferrier.
Ferrier. Mr. Ferrier, do you swear firm? Please raise your right hand.
Yep.
Mr. Ferrier, do you swear firm that the testimony provided for the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you please state and spell your name and give us your business address for the record?
Sure, my name's Kyle Ferrier, K Y L E F E R R I E R. And I'm with Arco Design Build Industrial, and that is at two hundred North Warner Road, King of Prussia, PA.
Okay, Kyle, how are you? Um can you please um provide the board with the benefit of your professional background? Uh the position you currently hold and any licenses or certifications you hold in the state of New Jersey?
Sure, yes, I'm a, I'm a project architect with Arco. Uh been at Arco two years, but I've been working with manufacturing, light industrial warehouse type facilities for, till about eight years. Um I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as a handful of other states, and all my licenses are current and existing.
Okay, and have you appeared before other boards in the state of New Jersey, and have you been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes, I've been accepted by several boards throughout New Jersey. I have not testified before Hal, so it'll be my first time out tonight, so thanks for having me, but yes, I have.
Okay, we would ask the board to accept um Mr. Ferrier, I'm gonna screw it up, I knew it, um as an expert in the field of architecture.
We will accept Mr. Ferrier's uh.
You did better, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm terrible, I just make up names. Um, all right. Uh Kyle, um can you just, for the board's uh purposes of identification, the date um or the most recent revision date on the plans that you'll be referring to and that have been submitted to the board?
Yeah, so we have exhibit A ten, which consists of eight sheets, and they're all dated um June first of this year.
Okay, thank you. Um could you please, um if you want to um put up any of those plans, please feel free. Um and I would ask that you describe what we're proposing in terms of the buildings, including what they're going to look like um in terms of the colors and uh the materials that will be used for the buildings.
Sure. Should be seeing my screen, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so.
And if you could just mention which sheet that is, if there's something to distinguish it from the others for purposes of the record.
Sure, so uh this would be page one of eight, and it's um a conceptual floor plan of building A. Basically have a floor plan and an elevation sheet for each building for the total of eight sheets. Um and the buildings are, have a similar design, so what I say for, you know, building A here will apply to other buildings as well, just to make it simple, but I can jump to any one of those uh at any time as need be. Um so as far as the, the building construction, uh they're designed for two future office spaces in the front of the building, uh which you'll see in the upper left and upper right corners, um with loading docks in the rear, as my colleague alluded to earlier, pretty simple. I'll try not to repeat anything uh previously, but they're, they're pretty simple construction, um pretty typical for this type of built, uh facility. Uh it's a concrete slab on grade with steel columns, uh steel girders, and steel roof choice um with a, to provide a clear height of thirty six feet.
Okay, um and um there are, obviously, when you say we could, the construction is the same for all of the buildings, obviously, there are different sized buildings proposed among the four.
Correct.
Okay, um and what will they look like from the exterior in terms of the, the color of the building? Um any detail where the offices will be visible from the exterior?
Sure, so for that, I'll jump to page two um of eight, which would be the elevations for building A. I'll zoom in to what one of the office corners would be here. So the, the construction for the exterior walls is a tilt up concrete panel. Um it's a load bearing construction, and we use um a combination of architectural reveals in the concrete panels. Um variations and building depth, so we have like projections and recessions into the building. Um as well as variations in paint color to define an architectural style here. At the entrance areas, we also have some storefront glazing um as you enter the building with a canopy above, and then some, some glazing above as well to imply more height uh to the entrance areas. And this sort of wrapping feature that we define with, with the, the panels, uh reveals and the paint scheme. And then we have some punch windows, some glazing here that you see on, on the front of the building, but they also, as the buildings being on the corner, they also wrap the side. This would be around the side as well. And we just, the, with the design, we try to pick, you know, a neutral color scheme. We have, you know, we have some color selected down here. Um as it is a speculative facility, we just try to appeal to the masses and use, you know, a, a neutral scheme here, really.
Okay, um now, um.
We have any, I'm sorry, Ms. Country, do we have any colored renderings that were developed?
Uh we don't have uh like a three dimensional rendering as part of this exhibit list.
Okay.
He didn't really ask for a three dimensional rendering, he asked for a color rendering.
Well, that would be this, this, this image is, is true to color of what the, the paint colors would be.
So it's gonna be on a gray side. You said neutral, so I, I just assumed more beigeish.
Okay, yeah, shade, we would have, sure, I'm sorry, so we would have shades of gray with like a charcoal blue accent color, they're, they're listed here with little swatches, but um this two D elevation is a, is a representation of those colors, yes.
Okay, and where is the clear story in the, the elevations?
Uh we have, so I had mentioned the glazing above the entrance door, so this, this here, this dark gray would be the entrance canopy, and then we have glazing above that uh at the entrance areas, and then clear story glazing we have uh along the, the loading docks, so we've kinda had them spaced periodically, these down the loading dock wall, get some light in the backside of the building.
Okay, and for the um, and for the benefit of the board and the public, uh when you have your HVAC systems and your ductwork and so forth in that front vestibule area, uh where, where do you anticipate your ceiling being as it relates to that front, front facade?
Uh we've designed it to where it would, I mean, it would fall basically at the top of this first glazing. Uh this actually below the canopy would be the, the highest ceiling level, which is about ten feet. This glazing above would be spanedal, so it would resemble glazing from the outside, but you wouldn't be able to see through, you know, ceiling and.
It would be blacked off on the inside, so you don't see the mechanicals above.
Essentially, yes, yeah.
That's something you'd be willing to put in the resolution?
What, what is it, that, that, the statement that he just made, whether they would um represent that that will be done? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, sometimes with these buildings, you know, that glass above ends up becoming glass. And then you see all the mechanicals above the ceiling, you see all the ductwork, and it just doesn't look, doesn't look right.
Um if, if the, the concern is that what appears to be, pardon me for the laypeople, that what appears to be glass on the outside, that you don't want it to be uh transparent, um that's what's being represented, so certainly if the board were to approve it, that would be a condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's how it's depicted here on the drawing. This, this kinda diagonal hatch pattern indicates spanro, which is the, you know, the opaque glazing. So when you see that pattern here on the elevation, that is, that is what's indicated. It's, it's, it reads differently than the vision glass, which is below it, so, yeah.
Uh Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Like, do we, we don't have a more sophisticated visual of what the proposal is for the building at this point?
I, I think let's uh, let's let the applicant finish his uh testimony, and then if uh we think we need more of a, of a model representation, we'll, we'll let them know. Maybe our professionals may opine on something like that. Let's, let's see how it goes, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
So can you talk about compliance with the ordinance requirements for the architecture?
Sure, so the, the two main ones um that I'll address here that have played a significant part in this, the design for this is um that there, that there are no uninterrupted wall lengths greater than fifty feet. Um so you'll see here in plan, we've indicated a three foot by deep by six foot wide recess um all the way um down the building. Now, these are centered on fifty four, but if you take the six feet into account, um we comply with that requirement. The other one.
Here, it says the maximum spacing between such articulation shall be forty feet. That's what it says, verbatim.
Where are you reading? I'm sorry. Where are you reading, I'm sorry?
I'm reading 188-228C. And I agree with what, exactly what he said thus far. However, it says, "The maximum spacing between such articulation shall be 40 feet." That's what it says. So I don't know, I mean, and I know we're not gonna finish tonight, so it's something you guys should just take, take into consideration and look at, because I understand where you're going, and I understand the 50-foot issue, but that, that requirement is also in, it's, it's under Item C of that section, Merrill.
188 dash, I'm sorry, I wasn't going as quickly as you with my copy.
228C.
Oh, I think I know the portion, okay, so I actually have that requirement for me as well. So the, as, it starts out as that no wall shall have an uninterrupted length of 50 feet. So with, yeah, so with that, this face here, that, you know, the, the wall itself is not longer than 50 feet. I think the 40 feet, correct me if I'm wrong, but would be like a variation in, because it also, it also speaks to a change in texture or color.
No, so here's the deal, the requirement is that if the wall length is 50 foot or greater, this requirement is, is put into play. And that the articulations need to be 40 foot or less. So that's like, it's not the requirement is, they have to be every 50 feet. The requirement is if the wall is 50 feet or greater, you have to have this requirement, and the articulation should be no less than 40 feet apart.
And it's also said, Ms. Beam, if I'm reading it right here, that the articulation shall not be less than three feet deep.
Right, and I think he did say they are three feet, correct? Say that, so like, that's not an issue that I'm, but.
And then there's also, and also in the following sentence in that paragraph, it says roof line offsets, something about roof line offsets, no greater than, need to be 75 feet.
Correct.
So there had to be like two, two reveals as well, right?
Yes.
So for that, I'm sorry, for that portion, yeah, if you, if you see this, this front elevation here, that applies to all four sides. But for that one, I think that one's a little clearer here on our, on our, on our exhibits that we did comply with that one. The 75 feet, a change in roof line should occur. So that is depicted here.
So what I will say is if, if there's not, if there's more than 40 feet between your articulations, a waiver is required.
We will go back and look at that.
Okay, and I believe there was another question about, was about mechanicals, but I wanted to point out specifically for, as far as where there would be on the exterior of the building. So any, any rooftop equipment that would be required to condition the office spaces or indeed the warehouse itself would be sent back from the building edge, the perimeter of the building. Generally be low lying, so it would not be visible from the right of way. And the roof, the structure of the building, the entirety of the roof will be designed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Ferrier. How do you, other than just making that statement, how do you prove that to the public and to the board that that is in fact going to be the case? What is, what is the actual mechanism that you're proposing that makes sure that there is appropriate screening for the HVAC rooftop units?
Well, the mechanicals, the mechanical design, the actual mechanical engineer's design would give us, you know, cut sheets of the roof equipment. We are not at that stage yet in the design. Just having done enough of these buildings and that have gotten through that process, I assume enough them to know, and they're also placed further toward, you know, the, the loading dock side as well. They also don't require a lot of equipment. If that was deemed a requirement, we could put together a, like a line of site diagram that frequently, which is, you know, a drawing.
It's an ordinance requirement.
Well, let me, it's Ms. Newman.
Yeah, I could just give them the section, though.
Yeah, no, no, I want, I want to cue this one up. This, this one, I think I need, need, actually need you and Ms. Bean to help guide me on how to deal with this one. So the applicant indicated that they don't have any tenants, they don't know what the final tenants are. But they do generally know that it's gonna be long and short terms, sure, long and short-term storage. So how can they make a statement as to how the HVAC is going to be set up for that particular tenant when they know what the tenants are? But, but they could, they could provide some type of, of discussion on what those limits would be and how they would comply with those requirements, is that possible? Is there, is that possible at this time?
I think it's possible, but I think more importantly, our ordinance requires that they demonstrate that these are all adequately screened from view from the public right of way as well. So they'd have to provide you with enough information to demonstrate that that's the case. That would become part of the record and part of this application, in the absence of that, they need relief.
Thank you.
And Merrill, that's Section 188-228I. And I just want to go back to the facade for one second, and it's not to, to criticize or whatever, but I understand you guys are gonna be looking at this. There's a couple of things I also want you to look at, which is the same section but D, that those recesses make up at least 10% of the facade. And there's a list of items, it says at least four of the following items must be utilized in the facade. Did you look at that? So, okay, so I just want to make sure, and, and like, it's very difficult, and, and I agree with Mr. Seaman, it's difficult to ascertain what we're looking at from this rendering. It's, I understand it's a rendering, it is what it is, but it's very difficult for a board member to ascertain what they're looking at. I understand we're gonna come back at a subsequent meeting, perhaps something a little bit more polished would be presented so that they could actually see what they're gonna look at as opposed to a plan. But there's 13 items on that list of four must be utilized. And so I think we're gonna need to see very clearly which four you're using. And, and how you're, and how the recesses 40 feet apart make up 10% of the facade.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Go ahead, go.
I was gonna say, I think I only have a few more points. I think where I left off was discussing the roof structure. So the entirety of the roof will be sized appropriately to accommodate a future solar panel array that we expect to be installed by the tenant. It will be a, the roof will be rigid insulation on metal deck with a reflective white membrane. And I think, actually, I think those were my last two points there.
All right, just to clarify, you indicated that the roof would accommodate, the structure of the building would accommodate future solar panel. Your point being that if the tenant chose to install them, those are not being proposed at the current time, correct?
Correct.
But it will accommodate?
Yes.
Okay. And is the, is there also, when you refer to the, the white membrane, is that reflective roof for purposes of deflecting heat?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're understanding that the building, will the entire building be air-conditioned, or is that going to be limited to the office areas?
It'd be limited to, yeah, it'd be limited to the office areas. These are considered semi-conditioned, to, you know, to where we provide, you know, heat to the warehouse areas, but only cooling at the office areas, future offices.
Okay, so that would also somewhat limit the amount of equipment you would anticipate being on the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, how does that, how does that statement being made when you don't even know what your tenants are yet? What happens if you have a tenant that needs cooling in the?
Well, Mr. Nacastro, the way I, way I write it is that's what the applicant is saying.
No, no, I understand, I, I understand.
And if they come, if they require air conditioning, they're gonna have to come back, back to the board.
That's absolutely correct.
Right.
That we're telling you what we're proposing, and if that changes, just like we indicated, if there's any, in a number of the issues such as security fencing, we're not proposing it as part of this application. If a tenant requires that, we understand that's not part of what we're seeking approval of this evening.
Steve, just make note of that, make sure it's part of the resolution.
Well, and, Mr. Sheriff, for the record, they did say they expect the tenants to install solar.
That's why I wanted to clarify that what the, if the understanding was, we are not representing, because since we've indicated we don't know who the tenants are, what we're saying is the building will be constructed in a manner that it can accommodate that. And if the tenant wants to do that, it will be able to accommodate it. When we say we expect them as opposed to the developer. That's why we clarified. Okay. So my understanding is that you would like the architect to present something in the nature of a colored rendering, and also to address these other items.
And I think. I just have one question, one quick question, I'm sorry, Merrill, for interrupting. Is, are all these buildings fire suppressed? Like, are there sprinklers in all the buildings, including the warehouse and the office part of it?
Yes, all the buildings are, are fully sprinkled, every, every part of the building.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Ms. Bean, you, you stated earlier you were looking for testimony on green elements. Did I, did I hear our professionals ask that?
I didn't ask for that, but I think they did testify to the fact that, and, and Merrill, correct me if I'm wrong, that the building is gonna be constructed in such a way that can accommodate solar if a tenant chose to put it there, correct? So I didn't really ask for that, but they offered that as testimony.
And also the nature of the roof, which is also considered an element which reduces energy utilization, as I understand it in the building.
Yeah, this is Steve Tomblock, and I believe, Merrill, there's a statute that any building over 100,000 square feet has to be designed to accommodate solar. Was that within the past year or so?
Steve, you may be right, our testimony is that we're providing it.
Yeah.
So I think that for this evening, we have notes what you want us to come back with. Unless there are additional questions at the moment. I'm actually counting the four things out of the 13, but since I don't get to testify, we'll deal with that when we come back.
That's totally fine, I, I'm not saying you didn't.
No, 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 I understand, and, and, you know, again, also not to be critical where, you know, we thought we were in compliance, we didn't see comments, so that would have refocused it. So now we are, and we will look at them to see if we are in compliance. And obviously, if there's a reason, we would ask for a waiver, but otherwise, we'll see if we can't bring it into compliance, which would be our objective. Okay. That would be, how are we dealing with time? That would be our direct testimony for this evening. And we, I'm just trying to look at my notes for what it is that the, the board is asking to see. And also, I'm thinking we have a site walk in our future. So in terms of adjourning the meeting.
How much time do you think you need?
Is, I assume Steve, someone from your office will be going back there. Part of it is if we are going to to go out and walk the site before we do the, you know, the landscape modifications. So I guess it's, I don't know how quickly the consultants would be able to go out on the site. That would be a first step in at least one of the items. I don't imagine that something like comparing the colored rendering is, you know, is that time-consuming. But obviously, if we do make, submit revisions as opposed to exhibits, whatever it is, would have to, those would have to be in 10 days in advance. What is the, the board, I guess I should ask, when the hearings are that have availability?
Well, right now, October 6th, but that's our next meeting, October 20. November 1st is open, December 15th is open.
All right, to the extent that this is the downside of not being in the room together. I'm going to, well, let me ask you this for the sake of perhaps preserving our notice, can we carry it as a date certain to October 20? And and then we would advise between now and then, depending on when we're able to schedule the site walk, so that we can do the revisions, and if it, if we are not able to get out there soon enough to allow a revision that we get it into the board and the consultants timely, then we would ask for it to be further carried with, to a, to a future date. Does that work, Mr. Chair?
Brian, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, it sounds fair to me.
I would just ask, Ms. Concher, if possible, as we approach that date, as we approach like prior to 10 days up to that date, if you know you're not gonna be able to make it, if you could let Eileen know so that we have the ability to put someone else on the agenda, because we are actually very backed up, and, and it's not, nothing to do with you or anything like that. But if you know in, in enough time that you're never gonna make that date, if you could let her know so she has the ability to bring someone else on the agenda, that would help out the board in trying to clear out their backlog.
Well, let me, and we will, but I'm thinking also that the alternative, we also have two other witnesses. At the very least, don't everybody get excited, our next witness is traffic. And I believe, I'm gonna ask Adam to confirm, I believe that we do have the traffic consultant available for that evening. So if we could carry, if we're ready to go back and go do the engineering, and we have the landscaping, if not, we can move on to the next witness, and then at the following hearing, we would have those revisions. Landscaping and the environmental questions and the architecture are not gonna impact on traffic. So why don't we, if, if the board can put us on for October 20, let's do that. And then I'm just trying to text to confirm that I'm not making a representation, that I can't for one second to confirm.
The last I had spoken to our traffic expert is that he was available for October 20.
Okay. In any event, yes, we will, we'll honor that request, particularly because we know we have sympathy on other applicants, that 10 days in advance doesn't mean 10 days, it means 14 days to get something into the newspaper. So we appreciate that, and we will, as of now, we believe will be before you on the 20th of October. At the very least, we will prepare, good, I just got confirmation, we would be able to move forward with traffic. If we've addressed any of your other items and we're able to go back to those, we will deal with that as well. So we appreciate if the councilor chair could announce the carry with date and time certain, we'd appreciate it.
Ms. Concher, I would also need an extension of time, if you want to put one on the record tonight.
We're happy to do that. We're happy to do that. We will extend this through 10/21.
Thank you.
And if you need that confirmed, I can email you or send something over.
Perfect, thank you.
Brian, would you like me to carry it? All right, for case number SP 1100 Monmouth Commerce Center LLC, this, the public hearing on this application is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting for October 20th, 2022, 7:00 PM. It'll be a remote meeting just like this evening. There will be no further mailed or published notice for the carried hearing.
All right, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Tombalakian. Because I did hear you say that the next meeting was going, I thought I heard you say the next meeting, someone say, was going to be remote. That would have been the October 6th. It's your understanding that October 20 will also be remote?
Yes, they're not going back live anytime soon.
Okay, thank you for the confirmation.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what do we got left, Eileen?
That is it in the way of applications, because the last application. That was case number SP 1095 AAVRHW property on Victory Road. And that is it. You are up to master plan update.
Do we want to go back? Did the attorney for the submission waiver ever come on?
No. So I will get in touch with him tomorrow and reschedule that.
Okay, all right, master plan update?
No update, other than we're going to start working on a farmland preservation plan as soon as the township and the state coordinate on the schedule. But that's that's next on our agenda. There's no rush, but it's going to be coming forward in the next several months.
What is, what is the state coordination mean? What is?
Because in the farmland preservation program, the state and the county play an active role in the funding. So they they review everything that we do and make sure everything is consistent with their program. So they play a very active role in that particular element. So that's something that we need to coordinate. And Matt Howard has been reached out, has reached out to the state multiple times and is working on coordinating a meeting. So as soon as we get that organized between them and the county, that situation is gonna move forward. Just because when we do a farmland preservation, we pay 16%. I think the county plays like 30 something percent and the state pays 50% of the preservation of the of the farm. So they are involved in the area, making sure that everything is up to their standards and things like that. So it's a little bit different from our other master plan elements.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And then I'll give a service update. You know, we've got the 24th next Saturday. We've got Howell Day. Howell Day is going to have a bunch of the volunteer groups represented there, you know, the Environmental Commission. We've got the Green Team. Farmland Preservation is usually there for for those listening and those here on this presentation. By all means, stop on by, ask questions, get involved. Those those groups definitely could use some help. And the help is well received. With that, with that, if anybody else has a question, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Brian.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.